Director.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, welcome everyone to City Council meeting for Monday, February 27th.
If we can have a roll call, Madam Clerk, to establish your calling.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Autumn Slane.
Here.
David Avenzino.
Here.
Terry McClung.
I'm here.
Stand for the Pledge of Ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We've got one item that we forgot to put on there that Mr. McClung asked over there, and that was the move to the basement. So we'll put that on under new business, item number three.
What was that?
Move to the basement, please.
Anything else from anyone? Get a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll approve that.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Get approval for, we have two sets of minutes this time. We've got approval, need a motion to approve the minutes for January 23rd.
Motion to approve, January 23rd, 2023.
All right, Melissa, Ms. Green made the motion, and Mr. McClung seconded it.
Is she doing both at once? Is that what she was doing, or what?
Uh-uh.
No, which is done one at a time.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, I second it, sure.
All right, any, any discussion, corrections?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Motion for approval of February 13th.
Motion to approve the minutes for February 13th, 2023.
Second.
Ms. Green made the motion, Mr. Meyer seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. We have, on the CAPC, we still have a position three that's vacant. In the HDC, the Historic District Commission, we have two people who are nominated, and their terms have expired and are up for reappointment. We have Marty Kogan for position four.
Make a motion that we approve Marty Kogan for position four.
I second.
Was that Steve, Mr. Holyfield?
Avenzino.
Oh, Mr. Avenzino, okay. Any discussion? All in favor.
Wait, wait, Steve.
Oh. Mr. Holyfield.
Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
Did you have a comment?
I was on the HCC for eight years, and three years, yes. You hear me? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Um, yeah. I was on the HDC for eight years and three years as chair. And HCC is a unique commission because we do, we are able to recruit candidates on a regular basis. I know that's harder in some of the commissions, but HCC is not one of those commissions. And I like to state, and it's hard for me to do this because I don't like to hurt people's feelings, but I found Ms. Kogan, entire time she was on the commission, she's very inappropriate in the questions she asks. Even as chair, I've tried to direct her not to ask inappropriate questions, but she consistently did so, and without, without listening to my direction, or stating that what she was asking was not under jurisdiction. She continued to ask questions. And two, she was very rude to applicants on a consistent basis, very condescending. And she embarrassed the commission, she embarrasses the city on a regular basis. And also, she was openly hostile to Kylie, the preservation officer, and was very rude to her as well. I urge City Council to vote no on this, on her win statement. We need to take these applications more seriously. She, Commissioner Lifer opens our city up to the possibility of being sued because she does, she does stop all directions, and she's a really not a good commissioner.
Mr. McClung?
Based on what Mr. Holyfield said, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this for two weeks to the next meeting and give us a chance to, you know, make, you know, to follow up on what he said and make our own judgments on that before we vote.
Okay, we have a motion to, to defer this.
To the next meeting.
For two weeks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Meyer had made the second. Before we do that, I would encourage the council members to talk to Ms. Kogan and voice and find out, and see, make your own opinion and decide what you want to do on this. So, all right, we have a motion to defer this for two weeks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Our next is reapportment for Maggie Hayde. Get a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve Maggie Hayde for HCC, reapprove.
Have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Slane made the second, Mr. McClung made the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of Maggie being reappointed, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved, unanimous. All right, this brings us up to public comments. Do we have public comments?
Don't.
I see none.
No.
Okay, safe. Looks like back in the back. All right. All right, well, that will, we will now go into our unfinished business, which we have none. And our new business, item number one is discussion of Council Budget Committee, Ms. Slane.
Yes.
Get a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
I'll second. All right.
So, Harry brought this up the last meeting, and I've been thinking about it ever since, to be honest. I started thinking about it like my business, which I know that we are not for profit at the city level, but I think it's something to, to look at. As operating any group of funds, you need to see correct numbers. To achieve that goal, we need to make checks and balances and plug in operational cues that allow us to see inconsistencies. The city budget is absolutely huge. It's a lot of information to cover, it's a lot of information to keep up with, and I think it's a lot of future planning that goes into this, that we don't do here at this table, that I would like to be a little more involved in, and I think this may be the perfect way. I started to think about how Lynn Berry came to the CAPC and talked about the committees and how they use that for their tourism board, which is not the same thing as city council, but it certainly is something to consider when our budget is so large. It has been mentioned that we have to use FOIA to get the information, or that we choose to use FOIA. But I think with this, with this committee, if we did start it, that it would be a, kind of an information highway. It would be somewhere where this committee could ask all the questions and maybe have a regular standing meeting with our mayor, or possibly even Michael, or whoever is going to be a part of this. Just last year, we were requested to hire a FOIA person because there were so many FOIAs. So I think that maybe this could be a situation to where it could help some of these things. And what would the committee do? Above all, I would think it would be a research committee, bringing back information to this table, to the council, for a presentation that is put in the newspaper, that is a workshop, maybe. If it is sensitive information, maybe we go to the private meetings. But this would be just only to inform, not to persuade, just a real visionary program that would ensure the path to financial success. Because there's a lot of things that we don't even look at, our bonds, we don't look at those hardly ever here. And then with, you know, the new people coming on this team, it's, it's hard to get everybody caught up, and then not only for the people that have been here, it's hard for us to continue to maintain an understanding of the flow. That's what I have.
Ms. Meyer?
Well, I was thinking of starting out slowly, like perhaps during our budget review, we have one of the department heads here that we could ask questions about, and how they're on their budget, like, you know, where do they need their, but where do their, is their budget lacking? Do you think you have more money in this line item than in another line item? Or, you know, how come you don't do this? And so forth. Nothing real heavy duty, but $90,000 for fuel for the police department, I think, is something we really need to get a handle on.
Mr. McClung?
Ten years ago, well, not quite even that long ago, but the, the accounting package that we had, the program that we had, every month when we got a financial report, every one of us got a stack of papers that thick. That's how far we have come. And that, that, we passed a, a resolution in, what was it, in 2005, I think, to change our accounting program and to do all that, and that was even, I don't think Lonnie was even hired yet, no, he wasn't then. But anyway, it was, you know, to get, because it was so cumbersome and so horribly hard to follow, we have come so far in, from then to now. And, and now with Michael moving in as the financial director, I see nothing but great things happening. I think we're in a whole lot better shape budgetary-wise, as far as assimilating the budget, because each budget head has to do that, you know, with their own department. They do that, prepare it and present it to the mayor. They have their meetings every month, you know, and go over things, you know, I just, unless there's something that really stinks, that, that's foul, I, I think it's okay. That's my personal observation.
Ms. Green?
We meet once a month for a budget if we need more time, and I, you know, what Harry suggested, having department heads here. But I wouldn't have a committee. I think this needs to be done in the public. We need to ask, if we have questions, we need, not to be afraid to ask them, ask them. And I want to keep it in the public, and I'm not against adding more time on to our budget thing. And we, we've hired a professional, and this is, I trust him, I know I can meet with him at any time, I can meet with the mayor at any time, I can meet with any department head. And unless I am missing something, we as city council members don't have to FOIA anything. We have the right to it. So I would prefer that we, you know, add a little time, invite, you know, like Harry said, if we need questions or need to work with something, we can invite them and go over it. But I think we're in good shape, I think the city's making money, I think we're spending it right. We just got just a pile of problems that we are eventually going to have to address. But we're slowly chipping away, and I'm proud of the bonds, getting them paid off early. So I'm, I'm for just, if you want to add some time to our budget meeting, that's great.
Mr. Avenzino? Yes, sir.
Yes. So, quick question. Would it be possible to have what is provided to us at the meetings as far as budget and accounting, would it be possible to have those sent ahead of time like Madam Clerk does with the agenda and notes, or is it too big of a file to send for review ahead of the council meeting?
We can send those out as soon as we get them prepared. I'm not sure when we send them out now on there. Michael, you want to come down and?
Don't you get it?
Because I think, I know we've already changed our, our meeting, budget meeting, our monthly budget meeting.
Yeah, no, that's been.
Yeah, our budget meetings are the same as, as what they were last year. The files, what we, the way we have it set up is, when the month ends, we'll say in December, then that gives us the month of January to kind of like get all the numbers in and make sure everything's in, and then we get that to you so that we can go over it the first meeting in, or when our budget meeting is, that first meeting in February. We can get those out to you earlier, we can get them emailed to you, we can get emailed to you anything you want. You know, that's kind of the purpose of having that budget meeting, is to, you know, we try to answer any questions that you have, and I try to do, you know, there's, I don't really like to just pull answers out of the air, so like if you have a question that I don't know, then I really try to go back and, and research it and get you the answer, and then follow up on our next budget meeting. So that's kind of the whole purpose of having the budget meeting, but we really don't have any questions during the budget meetings. So if you have some questions that you want answered, then I'd be more than happy to answer them during the budget meeting.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Avenzino?
It does. I guess what I was asking is to get that information, I would say, four days in advance, so that when we do come to Budget Committee, we have our questions prepared, instead of us all sitting at the table rifling through papers and coming up with questions.
Yeah, I could definitely, we could definitely do that. I mean, I would like to even get them to you like a week before, David, so that, you know, y'all have.
I thought you had.
Well, usually, I had been getting them. We, we've had a little bit of a delay because we had year end, we just went through year end. And the thing is, is I don't like to give you all the numbers unless I'm really solid with them, so I try to get them really solid before I give them to you. So sometimes we have things that come in throughout the month, and I'm trying to get in there before I give you the actual numbers. So sometimes it gets a little bit closer to the, the time of the budget, but I can definitely get them to you at least a week before, or, you know, maybe even two.
Mr. McClung?
Would it be better, I mean, you know, to have them, to give them to us at the first meeting of the month, since you want to make sure you got everything in, and we can move our budget meeting to the second meeting of the month?
We can do that, and you can also.
That way, we would have it two weeks ahead of time.
And you can also feel free to, to email me questions. You can all have my email address, and you can email me questions, and then I could bring those to the, the budget meeting, and we could go over them at the budget meeting in, you know, in public. But you could email me those questions that you have, and I'd be more than happy to get you the backup on it.
Let me, let me throw this out there, then I make a motion that we, we, that we move the budget meeting to the second meeting of the month, and are provided the, the printout that we get on the first meeting of the month.
I'll, I'll second that.
Point on. Okay. Any further discussion?
And that starts what, and that starts when?
That would start, well, this next month.
Yeah.
I would think.
Well, we'll have, the next meeting, we'll have our budget meeting, so I'll try to get those to you like a week before that budget meeting, and then, well, no, if we change it, it would be the end of the month.
We're changing it.
Yeah, that would be fine.
You get it to us, then.
Yes.
The next meeting, and we'll have the budget meeting the second meeting.
And you don't need to worry about hovering over it, you can have time to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Because it is pretty extensive.
So we can start it next month?
Yeah. We could move our budget meeting from the first to the second, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Avenzino?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ms. Slane if this would be a compromise to what she is asking for.
I think absolutely. I don't want any of these things to seem as if I'm pointing the finger, because I think Michael has done absolutely amazing job. I don't want this to look like he's not giving us any information. I just am saying that there has been times over this past few years that we have been blindsided at this table, and we didn't know what was going on. And, and then we're pretty much forced to make a decision right then and there. What I was hoping to do in this committee is to dive a little deeper into the things that we would want to look at. You know, for instance, just here recently, we, we had a situation with the city employees' salaries, that, you know, I was blindsided, somebody at this table brought it up, we talked about it, and it was an issue that could have been resolved before it hit us, and before it was an issue with our, with our people. That's just one situation. There are several other situations that I, for instance, the water, that are glooming a little bit over, that we haven't even talked about. But this would certainly be a step towards getting more questions at this table during the workshop, and I do appreciate that.
Mr. Meyer?
You know, the code states that the council sets by ordinance the number of employees the city has. Now, we've not done that.
Says that, number of police, doesn't say number of employees citywide.
Yeah.
Talks about the police.
Employees in the, each department.
Not.
Just, just the police area, I don't get it today.
You set the budget for the, for that. We set the, how that's being spent. We come before you each October, November, when we start the preparation of the budgets. But anyway, it's, council doesn't go in, decide you need six employees for public works. We come up with the budget.
No, but we do have to set the number by ordinance. We do. That's what it says.
We're.
Do you mean the sal, do you, do you mean the salary?
No.
Or?
Let me see if I can dig it out of here.
We're talking about the budget meeting right now. I mean, I'm not.
Well, number of employees has a lot to do with the budget, doesn't it?
Well, and that's where the budget, that's, every year, the departments come up, and they submit a budget, and then they give a budget to.
There's a big chunk of change for the police department's employees, but we don't know how many people are working at the police department.
Mr. Meyer, you're trying to micromanage the police department.
No.
And you're trying to micromanage the departments.
We're trying to, we're trying to establish who we're employing and where that money goes to.
Mr. Meyer, we have, every year, in November and December, we give you the budget for all the departments. At that time, we can have the department heads come in and justify what they're asking for and what I'm giving you. If you don't agree with those, and you want to cut their salary, employees back the budget, then you have that opportunity.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything about cutting anything. All I'm saying is, is the council is empowered, and it's our job to set the number of employees.
I disagree with that.
Okay. I can't find a view.
But let's, let's, we're going on to, we're getting into a different argument.
My connection is not working very fast here, but.
We're getting into something else.
I'll bring it to the next meeting.
All right, we're talking about establishing the Budget Committee.
One other comment about the budget, in, in kind of what the mayor is, is alluding to. When we start our budgeting process, I reach out to them and I say to the department heads, okay, here is your budget for last year, here's what you've spent so far this year, here's where you're at on the budget, here's your employees, we look at employees, we look at salaries, we look at all that kind of stuff. I send it to them, I have them send it back to me, then I review it and go through it and go, yeah, no, maybe, okay, yeah, you know, and then I send it back to them. It's not just, if they send in a budget, they get it. We financially go through them, and we, we go through every line, it's not, I go through every line, I sit down with every department head, I talk to them, I make, if they want capital expenditures, I make them explain what those capital expenditures are, and if we have to have them, or can it wait, or is it something we can pay for in two years or one year, or is this something that, you know, when is, when is this vehicle actually going to come in? We talk about all of those things. So, you know, and those are questions that, like, like Mayor was saying, if, if we need to have the department heads to come and answer those questions, we can, you know, when our budgeting is, but that, that is something that we do. I, you know, I know that y'all don't see the backside of it, but that is something that we do. We don't just, they don't just send in a wish list and we go, okay, yeah, everything you're going to get, you're going to get. We financially figure it out to make sure that we can afford it, and that, you know, because we're doing a lot of crystal balling in the, in the budget. We don't know if the taxes are going to hold up, if, what they're going to do, and so we, we take all of that into consideration. We give us cushions in areas so that in case this doesn't come in like it's supposed to, then, you know, we've got a, we've got this over here to take care of it. So we take that budgeting very, very seriously, and it's not something that, that I do in an hour or two. It's locked in my office for about three weeks that I go through it and go line by line on every part of that budget to make sure that what's right for the city is, is what we're doing.
How is the budget going, how is the council going to set priorities in this city if it's allowed, if the department heads privately with you and the mayor, I mean, none of us hear any of this conversation, how are we supposed to choose the direction that the city's going to go?
Well, I think if we're looking at capital expenditures and things like that, then you can set those kind of goals, you can bring them to the table and say, hey, we want to get this done, where is this going to fit in the budget? I think, but into the micromanaging of like the police department, and saying how much people are getting paid, or how many cars we have, or who's driving what, that's more of a administrative type role that comes from the mayor, and it's not, we don't choose that, that has nothing to do with the budget.
Mr. McClung?
It was common in the past to have all the department heads come and do that. And, and, and then it just somehow, it's been before the mayor's tenure, it, it, it got pushed to the side and, and, and just hadn't been done. But it used to be that was done, you know, prior to the budget, or in, during the months of budget process, it was done. They were all, came and met with us, or we had a budget workshop specifically set aside for several hours and let them do it at that. I mean, it's, so, I mean, if you, when it comes time for budget, then I think it would be prudent on the mayor, on the mayor's part to, to however he wants to set that up, whether it's two at a time, or whatever, so they have, so we have plenty of time, and they have plenty of time to answer, you know, at, at our budget meetings. And if we have to expand the budget meeting from 30 minutes to an hour and a half or something, we'll do whatever's appropriate. I have no problems with any of that.
I don't have a problem with that either. That comes up again back in, in September, October. We have a motion on the table right now, and we're getting off the side of that motion to move our meetings, our budget meeting, from the first meeting of the month to the second meeting of the month. And that's what the motion, that's what the discussion should be on. Do we have any further discussion on that?
Just, just the caveat with the proviso that we have, we have the paperwork at the first meeting.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so moved.
Mr. Mayor, I know we've had some differences about the police department, but this isn't about the police department, and how many policemen we have, and how much money we spend there. It's the fact that no one else at this table knows what is being spent there and how. And if we have the police chief here, we can ask him those questions. That's it.
You have the budget every month, Mr. Meyer, that shows you how much is being spent in the police department, itemized.
Well, sort of itemized.
If you want something else itemized, let us know and we will put it in there.
Let me explain then, okay? The police cars. Who takes the car home?
No one.
Yes, they do. He just told me. He told me. Officers take their cars home.
I don't think so.
Yes, they do. I was coming back from Branson the other day and I met one going 21 north towards Blue Eye.
Well, there may have been a reason for that, but they're not allowed, they're not going home with the exception of.
I've been told if they're on call.
Would you wait a minute? With the exception of the police chief is the only one who takes it home because he's on call 24 hours.
That's what you told me until I heard from our finance guy that the guys that are on call get to take their car home.
If they're on, Michael.
I believe what Brian has said is that yes, they do drive the car home in case they're called in. So they are allowed to drive their car home.
Okay, I was mistaken on that. I always thought they were staying at the police station.
No, they're able to drive their car, but that's a decision that he's made as a police chief on running the police department. Doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
Boy, that's money. That's wear and tear on cars. Don't insult me. That's insulting. We're buying two new cars every year, spending, I don't know how god awful amount of money on repairs. Yes, I think it's out of control.
Mr. McClung.
I mean, we're getting a little sidetracked here, but yes, that if, if they're all going to take their cars home on the press, you know, with the president or whatever the word is that, you know, the idea that it was, that they're going to be called back out so they can take the car home, I ain't for that. You know, they drive, if they have a specific reason to be on call, that's one thing. You know, if there's, but now I understand the chief and I have no problem with him taking his car home because he, I mean, he's the head guy and he, you know, he is the one that the buck stops with. So he does have to come in. But if, once they're off duty, they should be in their own vehicle.
I agree. That's something I'll talk to the police chief about. But that's not a council decision. That's something that's administrative. Council decision is for legislation.
But see.
It's not for administration.
The benefit is.
It's part of the budget. Past the budget.
The benefit is of this discussion though, this has come to the surface. So at least we know.
Absolutely.
So now it can be remedied. Or if it is a standard procedure that is to be approved of, then we can hear about that as well.
I'm not in disagreement.
Okay.
Ms. Slane.
He just pointed it out. If it wouldn't have came to the table today because we made this conversation happen, then it wouldn't have been addressed at all. Our job is to approve the budget and to understand the budget. And I'm sorry, we can't do that in 30 minutes.
And we don't have to pass the budget.
Truth, but all of us sit here and have asked the questions that we see just offhand and then we go on. But there's no process of saying, okay, hey, let's make some room for sidewalks. That's a major issue. But not once in the two years have we ever even talked about sidewalks. Have we not, we've not talked about water, our water issue that is over our heads right now. We've not talked about it at this table. I was just hoping that this committee would allow that space for that conversation. Because just like here today, we've brought up some things that none of us knew about.
But the fact of the matter is, is we have a budget meeting once a month. He could have asked those questions at any time during that budget meeting and he hasn't. So if we're going to have a separate committee, it seems like it's just double dipping. I mean, we're already, let's utilize our budget meeting that we already have once a month to discuss these things and ask those questions during that time. But, you know.
As long as we can have department heads here too. Yeah.
I don't think we need to have all the department heads here at every budget meeting. If we have specific information, and I've never said that the department heads couldn't come. If we have a problem and you have a discussion about their budget, they're always, I'm always welcome to bring them in. That's not a problem. Mr. McClung.
I think that needs to be, when we get to that, to the budget preparation again for this next year, I think that's.
Perhaps mid-year adjustments.
Yeah, it needs to be an absolute.
I absolutely agree, Mr. McClung. Ms. Green.
I have a question for Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
Michael, are our department heads under budget or over budget?
We keep them under budget. If we have something that comes to where we're going to be going over budget, then that is brought in for our mid-year budget adjustments. And that's usually just things that have happened weird or something that's come in. But yeah, but we do do that. We can move line items around as far as like if, say, we budgeted $5,000 for medical supplies at the ambulance and they ended up, didn't need it and they ended it, needed it somewhere else. We can move some things around like that. But if it's a large expenditure or something, you know, that needs approval, we do bring it to the council. And if it's something, if we've already done our mid-year budget adjustments and it's something that's outside a budget that we see that it, you know, so the ambulance breaks down and we've got to do something like right then, then that's when we bring it to council to get that approved by y'all. But no, we do not run over budget unless, you know, there's a budget adjustment coming.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
Best I can tell, we can't do that without a new resolution. You can't go over budget in any department. I mean, line items can be moved around as long as the whole department doesn't go over the budget.
And that's why we do our cleanup budget at the end of the year, which we'll be bringing. That shows exactly where we ended up. So yeah, we do the end, we do the first of the year budget. We do the mid-year budget adjustments. Then we do the year-end budget cleanup and then we do the budget meetings once a month for 12 months.
All right, any further discussion? Do you have a motion?
We didn't vote.
All right.
We got to vote.
Huh?
Oh, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we already voted. All right. All right, well, this comes up item number two under new business discussion, AMP taxes and business license. Mr. Avanzino, did you get your questions answered on that?
I did and I should have brought this up during the agenda approval, but we'll handle it all through the CAPC.
All right, so that will be taken off. All right. That brings us up to our next item of business and moving to the basement. Mr. McClung.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'm ready. What else you want to know?
You got your back, you better roll with you.
Is the basement ready?
No. Well, the basement's ready, but we have, I don't know if Ron's back there or not.
Ron's back there.
Yeah.
We still have audio, video that's not hooked up down there and that needs to be hooked up. Although we don't have to have that at this point. I think the CAPC discussed that and I think there was a lot of residents who were upset over it not being videoed.
Over what not being videoed?
The CAPC meetings.
They haven't been?
No, there's no video downstairs.
They are, but if they move downstairs.
But Ron has, it's to be there.
They can't do that at this point in time. Mr. Avanzino.
Yeah, I just wanted to make comments that I, for an assortment of reasons, I'm against moving downstairs. I think that the transparency that's provided by us being onstage in front of our constituents at a distance, being videotaped and audiotaped is very important to our residents. And I for one think that we should remain where we are as long as the temperature's not so cold.
Mr. Holyfield.
Just for clarification, the CAPC briefly discussed not videotaping, but no decision was made. There's no vote on that. And I did have a concerned citizen saying that they thought when we moved to the basement, there would be no recording for any council or commission. And I corrected her and saying it's not true, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
When we move to the basement, will it still be video and audio taped?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We have audio. We can tape it. It may not be live at this point, but it would be taped. Mr. McClung.
The goal in the future is it to be taped live, just like the meetings are now, right?
Ron. Yeah. Has input.
Right, right.
Ron. You're our resident expert there.
We can do audio and video in the basement. We'll have to run a couple lines down and we'll film stream from up here and run it from up here. The camera will be down there with a full audio, video monitor up here and run the stream up here for the short term. For the longer term, the city will invest in a set of equipment that will be dedicated to city and council meetings going forward. For a temporary, we could pretty much do the same thing we're doing.
When would that be able to be done?
My concern is that we had some maintenance that's been pending for this stage area for probably two, three years. And we really need to attend to it before the season. That's going to happen in April, starting the first debate.
We need to go.
I'll need a week up here, taking down all the lighting and cleaning all the lighting and doing maintenance. And then right after that, we're going to bring in the curtain maintenance people from Springfield. They're going to come down and clean all curtains and fire.
Ron, I think the question was when can we move downstairs?
Tomorrow. Well, no, not tomorrow. Say April 1st, by April 1st.
Our April 1st, our first meeting in April. We can be ready for video and sound.
Yes, like I said, we won't have the permanent situation, but we could do it.
Okay. All right, thank you. That would answer the question. All right, Mr. McClung.
This body, you know, some of the current council people weren't here, but this body approved to do that a long time ago. And that has always been our intention. Now, why the CAPC thinks they run the show now, they do not.
Mr. McClung, that's not what I was implying. That's not at all, so.
No, no, no.
Okay, I would just want to make that clear.
No, they're not running the show. They're not running the show. They were just talking about, never mind. There was a miscommunication about when they were going to be able to audio and video downstairs. And that was just from what the CAPC was saying. If it can be ready by April 1st, then I'm ready for a motion. If that's what you want to move.
I make a motion that we move our meetings to the basement, the first meeting in April.
Second.
All right, discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of moving the meetings, council meetings? Do you want council meetings or all meetings?
All the meetings. We need to get out of here.
Yeah.
This is overkill.
All meetings to the basement.
Just so David knows, there will be plenty of seating down there for the public.
I'm sure there will be. The chairs, all right. So there's, motion's been made by Mr. McClung, second by Ms. Green to move all meetings, city meetings, to the basement by April 1st. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, saying five, saying aye?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just going to abstain from the vote, mayor.
All right, Mr. Avanzino abstains, five, one. All right, so moved. Thank you all. Okay. All right, that concludes the meeting. Gets into agenda setting. Have anything at this point? Hearing none, we're, city council comments. Ms. Green, we'll start on your side.
Okay. I'd like to bring up tonight, there is a bill that will be going into the House called 197. And what it would do is it would take restrictions off short-term lodging, which is tourist lodging in the residential areas. And the people of this town fought very hard that they want their neighborhoods and they did not want any more lodging there. So I'm going to encourage the citizens of this town to get ahold of your representatives, your senators, because this law will not only hurt the businesses that are here, it will hurt our neighborhoods. It will depreciate property values on commercial property. It's not a good thing. And it will take housing away from people that want to move here or even people that want something to rent.
All right, Ms. Slane.
On behalf of the business community, Valentine's Day was awesome. At least it was for us, hoping it was for everybody else. Spring is springing, so that's nice. We're getting a little busier now, so it's great. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
Well, I think I've already said a lot. See you next meeting.
Mr. McClung.
I just wanted to say to the two gentlemen that are on the CAPC that I'm not directing anything towards you gentlemen about this versus the basement or anything. It's just that it has been implied to me by the CAPC prior to this that they were in charge of the auditorium and then it was their decision and it's not. And, you know, it's where we need to be. There's a, this is overkill for us to be in this room. It just, it just is. And so that's why I'm pretty adamant about getting down to the basement and moving forward. Other than that, I'm a happy camper.
Mr. Holyfield. You want to tell us a little bit what's going on down there?
Hello from El Dorado. We're in a conference here on tourism, the governor's state conference on tourism. We spent the whole day in workshops and different, lots of information, different booths and stuff. I'm learning a lot and it's very interesting information, so. I do, again, I like to say I agree with Terry, that we need to move down to the basement. And as far as I know, CAPC doesn't have any jurisdiction over making that decision.
I don't think they care.
Mr. Avanzino.
Yes, just first of all, wanted to echo Ms. Green's comments about HPP 197. Unfortunately, I do believe that it's going to pass with flying colors. I would like to challenge us as a council and Forrest as our attorney to try and look at ways, creative ways around this situation. I don't know that they're out there. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what can be done. I know that state law supersedes what we as a council come up with, but I would like to at least look at some options that may halt or slow down this process for Eureka because we have a huge housing problem. And allowing things like this to come into our city is only going to make it worse. As a matter of fact, that's one of the discussions that was talked about today in our conference here on tourism, is that you can't have tourism if you don't have the workers to support the tourist industry that can actually live in the city or close enough to the city. So yeah, that was a lengthy conversation about that, but anyway. And to Mr. McClung, we, there's really no issue from the CAPC moving downstairs. I was led to believe in the last meeting that it was because there was no audio. And I have received about 17 emails that citizens were concerned that there was no audio, or I'm sorry, no video that was currently down there. But if that's going to be fixed, then we shouldn't have that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you two are down there and.
But you can't come back.
I'm sure you will come back. Please come back. As been mentioned, I just got notice that the short, Senate Bill 197, the short-term rentals, it will be heard Wednesday by the House, City, County, Local Affairs Committee at 10:00 AM in the Big Mac Building B, which is the building behind the State Capitol. This bill passed the Senate Committee last week and passed on the floor. However, there were three no votes, including our Senator Brian King voted no. So if you want your voice heard, please contact your representative immediately and/or plan to attend the meeting. At the meeting last week, the meeting room was full of people who owned rentals. The municipal league and a couple of others were the only ones to speak against it. it. Actually, it was only the municipal league who spoke against this bill. The other people who were there were from Bella Vista and were very pro for this bill and are the ones who are driving this bill. The senator and representative who initiated this bill are both from Rogers, so I'm sure that's where this is coming from. One senator made it clear that his mind was made up, and if anyone wanted to change it, they, they could change it after it was adopted, uh, although that seems to be a strange way to make bills. But, uh, please let Representative Harlan Bro, who's our representative, and the others on the committee, know your feelings. Uh, this is real important for Eureka Springs. The bill's been slightly amended, but it's still almost entirely restricted cities or towns' ability to regulate short-term rentals. More specifically, even though short-term rentals are effectively businesses in residential cities-
Yeah.
-they will not allow us to regulate them any different than you would any other houses. It's important for representatives to know the issues you're facing with short-term rep, short-term rentals. Uh, I put on our website, uh, the members, list of members of the House, City, and Local Affairs Committees, along with, uh, the, uh, their phone numbers and emails, uh, on that. Uh, I've also listed, if you want to hear it, the hearing from last week in the Senate. Uh, and in reference to what Mr. Avanzino was saying, I've met with the Planning Commission today to try to take some, uh, steps to see what might, the Planning Commission might be able to do when this passes, so we're, we're working in that step. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna go down tomorrow night, and, and hopefully, I'll be able to testify before the committee against this bill. And what I'm basically gonna say, I'm just gonna kind of read and give you a little prep here, that, uh, Eureka Springs is, as many of you know, is a very unique and special place. We're a town of over 2,000 residents, and yet we have a million visitors each year. Tourism is not our only industry, it's not our major industry, it's our only industry. So we understand tourism and the value of lodging. Many who testified last time talked about the value of tourism, and how important it was to that, their community, Bella Vista. In September 2021, our former city planning officer gave a presentation to the city council regarding the number of short-term rentals listed on sites such as V R B O and Airbnb. Those listings reflected 299 unique properties, 248 of which were one single-family residential properties that became short-term rentals and have remained so. The fact results in the city council putting a stop to any additional owner-manager-occupied short-term rentals in October. We will allow owner-managers bed and breakfast lodging in the residential zones of the C U P. Eureka Springs has an abundance of short-term overnight lodging in residential neighborhoods, and the citizens feel we do not need any more. Short-term rentals, in our experience in residential neighborhoods, bring increased traffic, noise, parties, parking conflict, conflicts, and strangers. If you've visited Eureka Springs, that you know our streets are narrow, and we have limited on-street parking in the residential areas and in the historic district. Some places, we have no off-street parking, which creates additional burdens on the local homeowners, when we have out-of-town visitors staying in one of the B and Bs or existing short-term rentals. Due to our limited housing stock, such a law would encourage landlords to take long-term rental housing off the market and change them to short-term rentals. We already have a problem of finding affordable housing for employees to rent. The employees who work in the hospitality and tourism industry cannot afford rents that exceed $1,000 a month, which is the upper limits of affordability for most renters. Whereas a short-term rental may generate a gross income of $3,500 to $5,000 a month, the average overnight rental ranges from $115 to $560 a night. If S B 197 passes as it is, the crisis of housing affordability in Eureka Springs will only get worse, it would be taking away housing stock from local residents who are in need of place to live, which in turn makes it even harder for local business to hire a adequate number of workers. I've heard testimony during the Senate hearing that local management companies or individuals are doing the short-term rentals. Maybe that's true in Bella Vista, however, in Eureka Springs, we have a company called Vacasa, Airbnb and V R B O. Vacasa is a real estate company specializing in vacation rentals in 35 states and over 35,000 rental homes, and is based out of Oregon. Many owners of short-term lodging do not live in the city where the rentals are located, they're using the property strictly as a business enterprise and cannot respond to local issues. This means if there's trouble with noise, parking, or other issues, there's no onsite manager that can come over and take care of the problem. Vacasa, along with V R B O, are big business and are not responsible to locals' concerns. I have the good fortune to own a single-family rental unit in the residential area, and so while I could benefit financially from the proposed new law, such a law would not be in the best interests of Eureka Springs. A city should adopt a procedure in which it can show that it's addressing documented community issues such as loss of housing for local residents. Zoning should be up to municipalities, local leadership, and residents, as each city is unique upon itself. One reason people live in the city is for the protection of their property values. We strongly oppose 197 and feel that such control should remain with the city to handle and not the state. What may be good for Bella Vista may not be in the best interests of Eureka Springs, and vice versa. What we do as a city should not be dictated by another city. And that concludes my comments for that, so please contact your local representatives, other representatives, uh, and, and, you know, we have a chance, there's, uh, several people on there who like Eureka Springs, and, uh, I think will listen to us, so.
When's the meeting?
Wednesday at 10:00 in the Big Mac Building. So if you want to go down to Little Rock and testify, please show up early. I would suggest being in the room probably by 9:30, because I'm sure it'll be packed, uh-
Oh, yeah.
And to find seating, uh, and then finding parking. Ha, you think Eureka Springs has a parking problem? The parking problem is real bad when the legislature is such. But it would be good to have as many people down there as possible, uh, because I think they need to hear from us rather than just hearing from Bella Vista.
From what I heard was that, I don't know who it might have been, Brian, that said that, uh, a lot of those legislators didn't even know what, what they were voting on.
All right, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you all.
Oh, we got a-
Want to stick a-
No, no, I'm, I'm ready.